Maybe we'll start. What do you think, Chris? Okay. All right. We're going to start now. Good. Welcome to the April 21st meeting of the Bristol Planning Commission. And this is a first for me, maybe not for all of you, but I'm glad everybody was able to get on. Um, tonight, we are going to, first I'll ask you if you have any additions to the agenda, anything you want to change, add, or talk about? No? You can shake your head. Okay, good. And what we need to do is we need to approve the minutes for March 3rd. Chris, 2020. If we don't have them, that's okay, we'll do it next time. We don't have them.
I got them. I mean, I read.
It might be on the website. I don't remember. I thought I posted them.
Okay, but people don't have them then.
Yeah, we'll do it next round.
Okay, we'll do it next time. All right. So I wanted to, so tonight, we're going to basically talk about the subdivision regs that Addison County Regional Planning and has worked on. Adam Lugey will be here as a guest tonight to talk about those. But first, I wanted to introduce, and most of you have met him already, but Jeffrey, oh, I'm going to get it wrong now, Alumstead, is that correct?
Right, you got it.
Who is our newest member of the Planning Commission, and we're glad to have you. If you want to give us a little, just a little, little background, that would be great.
Sure. So, hi, everybody. I'm glad to be here and happy to be on the commission. So I've lived in Vermont since 2008, but I was in Middlebury until just about a year ago, when I moved to Bristol. I teach part-time at Middlebury College on Zoom now. So I just had a Zoom class about an hour ago with 32 students. And at Middlebury, I'm the Diplomat in Residence, from which you can infer that I'm a former diplomat. I was a Foreign Service Officer for the Department of State before I came up here for 29 years. And I lived and worked in Pakistan, India, Bangladesh, Malaysia, and Sri Lanka. And then I left that in 2006, came up here in 2008. And I wanted to make a contribution here in Bristol. So as I explained, I was in the Panton Hall, filling out an application for a marriage license. And there was a form that said, would you like to be on a commission? So I said, sure. And here I am. I'm happy to be here.
Thank you. We're happy to have you. Okay. So just to review, I'm not very good at taking my turn with talking, but I'm going to try really hard. So, and I can see some people have experience with this. If you're not speaking, it's good to put your, put it on mute. Some people have it on mute now. Lloyd, you're, you're on mute. I don't know if you can find the mute button, or if you know how to turn that on and off. Kevin, you're muted. Jeff, you're muted. Anyways, you guys know if you're muted. So, um, so when you want to talk, just make sure your mute is turned off. So what, uh, what we're going to do, um, we'll just move right into it. And everyone I know went over the subdivision regs. And we have Adam here, who rewrote them and edited them for us. And he's going to go through kind of, you know, the changes that were made and be available to answer any questions and explain anything we don't, we don't quite understand. So you can take it away, Adam.
Hi, great. Thank you, Katie. So for those of you who don't know me, and I think I know most of you, I'm Adam Lugey. I'm Director of the Addison County Regional Planning Commission. So I have been working for a little bit with, with Chris and Katie, and to a lesser extent Valerie, to, to come up with a draft set of subdivision regulations for the town of Bristol. We are adding them into your existing zoning regulations and floodplain regulations that we created, or recreated, redrafted two or three years ago now. And so I've renamed it Unified Development regs. It's still got your zoning, it's still got your floodplain regs, it now has your subdivision regs. That's, that's just what I called it, that. So my charge from Valerie and Chris and Katie was to come up with a set of subdivision regulations for the town of Bristol that, you know, we thought would be, would be fair and relatively easy to use, but still protect the resources that Bristol wants to protect. So the draft that you all, I hope you all have before you, is the draft that we came up with. So we added subdivision regulations. Those are in Article 9 of the Unified Development Regulations. As Valerie and Chris requested, I have also enabled a Development Review Board instead of a zoning board of adjustment throughout the regs. Your select needs to vote on that, but that's how they asked me to draft them. So that I made that change within the regs. Basically, we could, we'll talk about it as we go through. And then Chris, as your zoning administrator, asked me to make some changes to your existing zoning regs that hadn't necessarily worked for him in his day-to-day job. So you can see those in there as well. In the document you have before you, and I'm going to pull it up on screen and share it in just a second, all of my changes are in red. So I use track changes to show you what I was doing. If it's in black, it's your existing document. If it's in red, it's a change that I am proposing. It's your document. You don't have to take my proposals. If you don't like them, don't take them. Speak up, let me know. Let's see, if there, if the document is highlighted in yellow, I did it for two reasons. One, just to check my sites. So if I'm referring back to Section 535, I highlighted that in yellow just to make sure that I knew where all the sites were and I could go back and cross-check them as I was developing the document. And I've left them on just because it still may change. So those, those sites need to be accurate. And then the other things I highlighted in yellow were questions that I had for you or that Chris had for you. There were things that he wanted to talk about and potentially change. So with that, I'm going to run through the document, I think, from beginning to end. Depending on how we do, time-wise, I may skip over some of the zoning sections to make sure we make it to the subdivision sections. But I'm going to try and run through the whole thing tonight. Please feel free to interrupt me and ask questions if you want to. So just turn off your mic and say, hey, Adam, I have a question, and we'll, we'll talk about it. Let's see, Kevin Hansen sent Katie some questions or comments prior to the, this meeting. I have, where I could, I've incorporated his changes. So where he caught some typos and, and other things, or made some other suggestions that seemed non-controversial, I put them in. Where he asked questions or wanted to know more, I've got those highlighted as well. I don't see him here tonight, but we can, we can talk about him and then he can, well, you all can talk with him about it.
He's here.
I am here.
Oh, okay, good. I'm sorry, I hadn't seen you before, and I don't know if we've ever met Kevin, so.
So does everyone know Adam? Now you all do.
Okay.
So Kevin is here.
Okay, great, good. So you heard me say I've incorporated your changes, Kevin. Where I could, and then where you've asked questions, we'll make sure we go over them.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great. Before I start sharing my screen and run right into the document, does anybody have any questions about what we're doing, protocol, where we started, why I did certain things?
Adam, this is Tom Morales. And just a question here, this is, seems to be sort of a template. Is it something that originated from state, or where did the template come from?
The subdivision are ones that I've developed over time. So I'm sure I picked them up somewhere. I did a lot, honestly, in this, in this revision for the town of Bristol to revise them and try and make them as, I would say, as easy to read as possible. And also so to make sure that the, the application criteria reflected the decision criteria. So we were only asking for things that would impact, well, the DRB's ability to make a decision, so.
This same format used in other towns here in Addison County?
I have used this format in other towns in Addison County, although I think, I like this one better. I spent a fair amount of time, like I said, revising it to make sure that the application criteria matched the decision criteria. I will tell you, when Chris and I talked, we also tried to incorporate a lot of other, and not duplicate, incorporate and not duplicate, a lot of other state permit criteria. So for example, with water or wastewater. Basically, we said, you know, in order to pass the town subdivision regulations, you need to, at Site Plan, tell us you've got somebody on board that knows what they're doing. At Preliminary Plan, basically show us your application for the state wastewater permit, which you're going to need for a subdivision anyway. And at Final Plan, show us the permit, or we'll put a condition in the permit that says this permit's not any good until you get your final state wastewater plan. So we did that with wastewater and stormwater. We also looked, relied pretty heavily on the Agency of Natural Resources Atlas, Natural Resources Atlas, for certain, certain criteria. Streams, floodplains, wetlands, deer yards. We did not use all their criteria. We chose the ones that had what we considered the best fixed maps, the best data. So, and we didn't want to, since this is the first time Bristol's had subdivision regs, we didn't want to make it a full-blown Act 250 process. So we really focused on the ones that we thought were most important to Bristol.
Other towns in Addison County have implemented the same plan?
Every town in Addison County has subdivision regulations at this point, except for Shrum and Bristol.
I just, I just want to tell you that, um, we, the reason, maybe we should just go over the reason why we decided to do this, and the benefit of having subdivision regs. And maybe, you know, either Chris or you, Adam, can explain that, and why we have pursued this. Because that might make, make it all make more sense. Do you want to talk to that, Chris?
Sure. So the big driving force is really from a state Act 250 standpoint. Right now, since we don't have subdivision regs, commercial development, anything, an acre or greater of commercial development needs to go through Act 250. We've seen that stymie a couple of projects. It held up a project, luckily, the applicants went through the process. During that, the Select Board really made it clear that that isn't acceptable. There are steps, there are safeguards that we can put in place, still have some control in not force a very basic commercial development through Act 250. It also expands the number of building lots that a residential subdivision can do. Goes from, I want to say six to 10. Am I correct on that one, Adam? Yeah, I thought so. And those are really two driving forces. It doesn't take away anything from our, our ability to develop the town as we saw, as we've built our, our planning documents around. So it's really moving forward. It eases up some of the state controls, and that was really the driving force. And it would make my job a lot easier, to be honest with you. Right now, there's a lot of nebulous stuff that I get thrown that really should go to a DRB, or, which is what will be forming.
Also, another question. The Development Review Board, it's a separate board than the commission, obviously. What's the thinking behind having something separate?
Yeah, so that's fairly standard. So what, right now, we currently have a ZBA, and we have a Planning Commission. The ZBA will be dissolved if this goes through as we plan, and a DRB will be formed. The nice part, so all it's really going to do is, in essence, rename the ZBA, the Zoning Board of Adjustment, to the DRB, and we'll move basically any quasi-judicial hearings into their realm and not at the Planning Commission level. The planners will be planners, and the DR, the Development Review Board will be the review board. It makes it very clear, not only for, for the boards, but it also makes it very clear for the applicant. I have spoke with Kevin Brown, who is the current Chair of the ZBA. I spoke with him earlier this week, and last week, actually. And meeting, I'm going to be sending him a copy with any changes we have. He's got some input, and we discussed the transition. He feels that we, this is a great idea. He's very, so far, he's in favor of it. He thinks it's a good, a good step forward, and hopes that most of his board members will want to step forward as well.
Thank you. That's all the questions I have for the moment.
Just, just a point of order. I, I've reviewed the Section 9 for the, the subdivision regulations. So I thought that we're going to, that's what we're going to talk about. But I'm certainly open to talk about the whole document, but I don't want to lose sight of, at least from my perspective, that Section 9 was what we were focusing on.
I'm very good, and Kevin, I can definitely do that. I wanted to, I wanted to start at the beginning with some of the DRB process that, that Chris just, just spoke to, just because it goes through, it's a change that goes throughout the whole document. And I figure if somebody picked it up at the beginning and saw that, they'd be, they'd want to understand that first. So I think it adds, adds context, says to process. And I'm hoping that I can get through all of them. So if I find we get bogged down before we get to subdivision, then I will move it along and get, make sure we get to subdivision and skip some other stuff for later. Okay?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. So then, without further ado, I am going to share my screen and put up basically the unified document. This is what Katie sent to all of you. Except that I have read, like I said earlier, I've read Kevin Hansen's comments, and I've addressed them where I can. Okay? Let's see. I can't see chat while I have the screen share up. And since I'm going to try and walk through this document, I understand, Bill, you and Katie take notes? Or you take notes, Bill? Yes?
I can't see, I can't see any benefit.
I'm taking notes, Adam.
Okay, great, thank you. Just so that way, I won't, I will be able to try and run the meeting and not necessarily focus hard on all your changes that you choose to make. Okay? let's see. I'm going to start you off on, in your, in your intro on page eight. So this is an intro from the Planning Commission. We wrote it last time we did the zoning regulations. Kevin, you had a couple of corrections in there. You were right. What I wanted to just say to you, page eight, here we go. So this is, whoop, the introduction of these, to these zoning regulations. And I probably need to change zoning regulations right there and make it Unified Development Regulations. And then with a parentheses, have zoning subdivision and floodplain. So I see a change that I need to make already. But what I wanted to say is, this letter is your letter. If you want to change it after I do, it's you as the Planning Commission, speaking to your citizens, your constituents, so feel free to change it however you would like when this process is done.
What page is that again, Adam?
Excuse me, it's on page eight. And as I-
Got it.
Okay. As I flip through the document, I will try and give you the page number of the, of the change that I'm talking about. Then I'll try and give you the section of the document that I'm in, and, and then go from there. So hopefully, it will help you all follow along. Let's see, next, I am going to go to Planning Commission DRB, and that's ubiquitous throughout the document. I'm going to take you actually all the way up to Article 3. We didn't make any changes in Article 1 or Article 2. So Article 1 is kind of, I'll call it introduction preparation. Article 2 is your zones, it's your uses, it's your setbacks, it's your, it's all of your standards. We did nothing to change your zoning there. So Article 1, enactment intent organization stays exactly the same. Article 2, establishment of zoning districts, zoning map, all of your uses, all of those other things. We did not make any changes to any of your districts or any of your uses. You can, if you choose to, but that wasn't part of my assignment here. So I just want to make that clear to all of you. So I'm going to fast-forward to, let's see, Article 3 on page 38. If you have questions, please feel free to stop me and speak up. So this is the administrative section of your zoning regs. This is basically what I'm going to call the process section of your zoning regs. 329. The first portion of the process section really deals with the review by the zoning administrator, Chris. That has not changed either. Someone who just needs a byright permit, building a simple house, or, or doing a permitted use can just go to Chris and get a permit. Where the process changes a little bit is in Section 330. And this is the section that deals with the change from a Planning Commission and a Zoning Board of Adjustment to a Planning Commission and a Development Review Board. So basically, you will see, we've taken out the references to the Zoning Board of Adjustment. We've replaced it with Development Review Board. And like Chris said, the Planning Commission, you all lose some duties. You lose, well, you would lose your quasi-judicial review of site plans. You would lose your quasi-judicial review of rights of way. And you would lose your quasi-judicial review of subdivisions, NPUDs. Those all go down to the Development Review Board. So the Development Review Board is doing all of the quasi-judicial review of every single type of permit or appeal in the town of Bristol. So if someone's appealing a decision that your zoning administrator makes, that would go to the Development Review Board. If someone's looking for a conditional use permit, that would go to a Development Review Board. A variance would go to the Development Review Board. All of your hearings go there. Anybody have any questions about that? And actually, Kevin, this highlighted in blue, the board shall consist of a majority of legal residents of the town of Bristol, and you asked whether it has to be all or not. The answer is, under statute, it doesn't have to be all residents. It has to be a majority of residents. So when statutes enable zoning regulations in this case, because this is part of the, they say, basically, the Development Review Board has to be a majority of Bristol residents, but not all of them. It can be all of them, and it's basically your Select Board that's doing the appointing. So they'll, they'll make that decision. But I just wanted to address your question there, Kevin.
I have a question. Can a member of the Planning Commission also be a member of the Development Review Board? Or is that considered a conflict?
They can. And in some small towns, they're the same body. I would say Bristol probably have too much work for that to be a good idea. But it's certainly an option for one or two people to cross over. The Select Board also can sit as ex officio members, so that, so that they know what's going on. But it, and often, it is nice to have someone on both boards, so they can report back to the Planning Commission, hey, we did, we did a good job on this section, or when we wrote this section, we really blew it, and the, you know, the Development Review Board hates it because it sends them into a tizzy for whatever reason.
Yeah, hey, Adam, the examples of that, so Panton, the town of Panton where I work as well, their DRB and planning are on. Moncton has both, has two unique boards, with one member that sits cross-board on purpose just for what you just stated. Peter's able to sit through both meetings and convey concerns or issues between the two boards, and that's worked really, really well.
So I guess the reason I had highlighted that before, Adam, is if that is, you said state statute allows that, but is it required? So I raise it more of a point of question for the board, amongst the board, if we want to require everybody to be a citizen of the town, and if we could say that, or are we limited by state statute? And I think, I think the other thing, based on what Chris is saying about Moncton, would we want to write, again, would we want to formulate that in as a requirement?
So I'm going to let you all respond to Kevin, because that's your decision. It's a floor, not a ceiling. So the majority have to be town residents. If you wanted to make it a requirement that everybody was a town resident, I believe that's within your power. I'd caution you against requiring someone to have someone serve on both boards, just because you may not find that person. And then what do you do? But, but you can certainly recommend it, or, you know, we will endeavor to have one person serve on both boards. Do you have a person that currently serves on those ZBA as well as the PC?
No. We don't.
Okay.
And I think we would have a hard time finding a, a person that wants to be on both boards. Maybe, who knows? It might come up. And right now, the Select Board, pretty much, they decide who is on the Planning Commission. That's how it has been. So if, I think they would want to be involved in the decision if, where the members are, you know, if they're all Bristol residents or not. I don't know if that's something that we-
Okay, do you appoint to the ZBA currently, and the proposed DRB in this case? And in order to create a DRB, the Select Board needs to hold a hearing and basically make that change. So they're, they're the people that are going to be in charge of that change.
Right.
This change in language reflects that Valerie had, and Chris had told me that the town was interested in moving there and wanted to make sure you all had a chance to see it and comment on it, and want to make sure the Zoning Board of Adjustment has the same opportunity. But ultimately, it is a Select Board decision.
Yeah, there, it might be, a few of us, just to add a little bit of verbiage regarding the desire to have somebody sit cross-board, not as a requirement. That way, the Select Board, when they're looking at appointees down the road, they understand what the, what the intent was. They're not required to do it, but it would be nice, if somebody came forward who wanted to do it, it would be permissible.
I would agree with that.
Me too.
Of course.
So can I, does anybody disagree with that? Can I take that as- Can I take that as a consensus?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so Katie or Bill, if you can help me record that, that would be great. So that pretty much addresses our DRB, well, our change to a DRB from a ZBA concern. So I'm not going to really dwell on that anymore. Kevin, you also made a suggestion about the downtown design review committee, and I've incorporated that as well. And thank you for balusters. I had misspelled it so badly, I couldn't find it in spell check. So let's see. I want to spend a little time on Section three forty, just because this is the process that the zoning board of, or excuse me, the development review board now is going to use when it goes through every type of hearing. So the process will always be the same. The notice, the review process, the decision will always be the same. The criteria may differ depending upon the type of action they're taking or the type of application before them. But the process is always going to be the same. So for conditional uses, appeals, variances, waivers, site plans, flood plans, subdivision, the process is always going to be the same. They're going to give notice, they're going to have a public hearing. Basically, and they're going to have certain review responsibilities. And then they're going to make a decision. So three forty is really the guts to the process of your zoning document. I will notice in the notice procedures, Chris, I guess this is a question for you. Here I have in yellow highlighted, the ZA or the clerk or the chair places the notice in the newspaper and basically mounts them on the bulletin board. Who does it currently? So who should I put in there?
I do it currently. The ZA does it because that's part of the role of the ZA is support for the boards.
Okay, so I'm just going to delete clerk or chair then, and I'm going to use the ZA throughout this. So you post it at the landowner's property, you do the ads in the newspaper, you send out the notice, is that correct?
Right, we send the poster to the landowner, yeah, they actually physically post. The only, the only thing I was going to suggest on a change here is Bristol's one of the few towns where the town is responsible for notifying a butters. Every other community that I've worked with requires the applicant to, so in Section one, subsection A, subsection three, where it's talking about notifying a butters, that currently is a town. Every other community requires the applicant to do it and then just show proof that such notification has occurred. So that's one change that I would like to work with. I can put some verbiage together for you, Adam, and send it to you this week if you want.
So you would be, you would be the notifier?
No, I do not want to be the notifier. The problem is right now, we are the notifier currently, and it's not a great process. It really, putting the onus back on the applicant seems to work much better for these type hearings.
I agree with that.
New Haven, actually, the town notifies the butters. And that's my only other experience, so I'm surprised to hear that. I believe you, but.
From my perspective, it just has to happen. I don't care who does it.
And if it doesn't happen, it's a problem.
And if it doesn't happen, it's a problem, that's correct. But it's the applicant's problem.
Right.
Putting the onus on them is not uncommon. Chris is absolutely right.
And that's exactly why we, why most towns have moved to that model, is it puts the onus and the responsibility on the applicant and not on the town. So if for some reason, A, and a butter was missed, if this goes to appeal or to the environmental court, the town is not the one who made the error, it is the applicant who made the error. Sort of absolving the town of some of the responsibility at that point.
My experience, particularly with two fifty, is exactly the same thing. Is you, as the applicant, notify the butters and you certify and list out who you've notified and how you've notified them and show the evidence of that. I tend to agree with Chris that it makes a lot of sense to do that.
Okay, can I take that as a consensus of the planning commission?
Okay with it.
I'm okay with that.
I'm good with that.
Okay.
So I'll send you some verbiage on that later this week, Adam.
Again, what article was that referring to?
Three forty.
Okay.
That was section.
One A three. So if you can see where my cursor is on the page, I'm changing it from the zoning administrator to the applicant.
Got it, I got it.
Public notice regs over here. Okay. Excuse me, I just needed to check my notes. Chris, you're still going to do the posting of the notice within the towns? Actually, this is the same thing. This is just some, site plans have a shorter, have a seven day hearing as to right of ways and some other things. So I'll just make this one reflect the one above. Review procedure. I just want to highlight for you, I changed this a little bit. I broke it out so that I would tell you that the review procedures by the development review board are a little bit more clear. The, your old statute was fine, it referenced all the, or your old language referenced all the correct statutory sites, but it got a little dense, so I broke it into A, B, C, D, E, et cetera. And Kevin, I think you'd asked me about the fifteen days there, and that is also in the subdivision section. I'm looking at the paragraph that I highlighted in yellow, so you can all read that. This is a new paragraph, or potentially a new paragraph for the town of Bristol in your zoning administrations. You may want it, you may not. That's why it's highlighted in yellow, I want you to let me know what you like. So it deals with when an applicant proposes to construct improvements that the town will have ownership over or connects to town-owned infrastructure. So let's say a subdivision is building a road and wants the town to take the road. Or they're extending the water system and want the town to take the water system back. This basically gives the town the ability to hire an engineer and basically, and review the construction job, the plans, and then the construction job for the piece of equipment that the town is re-taking over and build the applicant for that. So it's new, it's enabled in statute. Don't know whether you want it or not. Would you like me to keep going? And you all can think about that question.
I'd just like, can you give another example of that, so I get my head straight on it?
Sure, so let's say, let's say I'm doing a subdivision. And I need to build a road. And I want, I want the town to take over the road. So I want the town responsible for the maintenance of the road in the future and for plowing the road in the winter and such. And the town's amenable to it, but it says, but it wants me to build the road to a certain standard. This provision gives the town the ability of an engineer to one, set the standard, and two, basically inspect the road and make sure that the road meets the standard before the town takes it.
That sounds reasonable to me. I think that it's a discretionary thing, because it may require, it's not that you have to. So based on the complexity of the, of the project, you may require that or you may waive it, which I'm agreeable with that as well.
And yes, I purposely set it up as may, like you said, depending on the complexity of it, it may be necessary, it may not.
Is this a standard procedure?
It's enabled in statute, so yes, it can be standard. Not every town has it in their zoning. But it's in a lot. And it's especially in a lot of the places with bigger subdivisions, where they are being asked to take, happen as much in more rural towns.
And it's the DRB that would decide whether this was required.
That's correct.
Seems reasonable.
I find, you know, I find this more important, particularly in a village situation with water. Make sure that many, any sort of underground utilities that are put in place are done properly before the town takes them over.
Okay, it sounds like we have consensus on that, so I'm going to un-highlight it.
And again, that's Section three forty I.
That is Section three forty, hold on. Two I, A I.
Section three forty-two I, got it.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's see. I am now going to move to condition, three fifty, conditional use. How long do you want this meeting to go, Katie?
Katie, rally.
Katie, I can't hear you.
Muting, I was muted.
Yes.
Well, let's see, what time is it now? We try to not go past nine, but I think everybody would like it to be more like eight thirty. So, or earlier, so whatever you can, you know, eight thirty is fine. Do you think you can?
Okay, what I think I'm going to.
We should get it done, you know, we don't want to have to, if it's reasonable.
Well, so what I would like to do then is I'm going to, I'm going to continue and I'm going to get through Article three. And I've just got a couple more points on Article three. I'm going to skip Articles four, five, and six. I didn't make a lot of changes there, but I have some questions for you there, highlighted in yellow. So we'll save those to the end. And I will go right to subdivision after I get through Article three. Okay, so once I get through this process stuff, I will get right to subdivision. And then if we want to, we can go back to the other things that are highlighted in yellow in the Articles four, five, six, or four, six, and seven. Or we can make that your homework, depending on what time it is.
Okay, sounds good.
Sounds great.
Okay, good. So Section three fifty, conditional uses. I think I just wanted to use this as an example. I made a couple of changes here. Conditional uses are uses that are, they're not by right uses, but they're allowed uses. So the first question in a conditional use hearing is, is this appropriate for the neighborhood? Those would be Section three fifty-five, your general criteria review. If you say yes, it, you have, the community facilities have capacity, the character, it conforms with the character of the area as defined by the town plan. It does not have traffic impacts on the outside place, on, outside of, within the subdivision or within the property that's being developed as a conditional use. That's the first question, that's the first tier of questions. Is it appropriate in this place? If you find that it's appropriate in the place, then you go to site-specific criteria for review. So these are conditions that you would put on an application for a use that are interior to the parcel. So there are things like circulation of parking, pedestrian access, lighting, storage of trash, building design for lots within the village area. There are some specific things called out, but it's all internal to the parcel. Those are your same criteria as site plan review. So I just wanted to call those to your attention. The second half of that test is your site plan review. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yep.
Okay, I'm seeing heads nodding. So I'm just going to zoom by the rest of this stuff then. And I go down to site plan review, which is Section three ninety on page, I didn't write the page number down. Site plan review, so this is page. Your box size, my page numbers, page fifty. So we're halfway down already. I want to stop here because I am taking planned unit development review out of site plan review or kind of the other reviews. Because if you're doing a planned unit development, you're automatically going to be subject to subdivision review. And I have included basically the PUD standards, the planned unit development standards as a portion of the subdivision application criteria. Okay?
Yep.
Okay. Then I don't need to tell you anymore about that.
Question about that.
Go ahead.
So you're saying that if you're looking at a planned unit development, it immediately, it goes, automatically goes to subdivision?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, my understanding was that it was separate from that. But it, but is that by statute?
No, not necessarily, but it, what planned unit development does is give the, in this case, DRB, the ability to waive certain setback requirements that are normal to the zoning. So let's say your zoning normally requires every lot be a minimum of two acres.
Right.
Planned unit development, if you meet the planned unit development criteria, you can change the, you can ask the DRB for waivers to say, well, because of this river, this stream that runs through the property, I want to make this lot one acre, all on one side of the stream. I don't want to have to have the lot cross the stream boundary and the, and the.
Right.
At the, at the criteria and decides whether or not it will give you that waiver. PUDs really are for the development of land though, just like subdivision is. You don't, you could do it all in one big parcel, but you're doing almost exactly the same thing without changing fee ownership. So it fits nicely as a subsection of your subdivision regulations.
The reason I ask this question is I sort of equate subdivision with changing or adding a new boundary. So you're changing plot, you know, boundaries and you're creating lots or maybe reducing lots or adjusting lots. Now you could have a PUD project that doesn't change any lot lines because often, for example, with the cohousing in Bristol, there were none of the lot lines, well, they did in that case, they did eliminate. They just joined properties, but if that, that was one property and they didn't adjust any of the property lines. Do you see what I'm saying?
I do, Katie. Then they also, basically, they, then they subdivide. Then they also, basically, they, then they subdivided or sold off units. I, I don't, and I don't know if, whether they're condominium units within the cohousing, or I don't know whether they're long-term leases, I don't know the legal structure, but in essence, they, I would tell you that they broke it down into different units. So they didn't necessarily sell them outright, but, but they used some other type of legal mechanism to, in essence, subdivide and divide ownership in the property so that different, either house owners there or apartment owners there do own some sub-portion of that parcel. And then the, the rest of it's basically common area owned by all of them.
That's true. Okay, it's just, it, it, okay, we can maybe talk more about this later, but I just, I, I guess, as, going back to that point of I always equated it with changing, actually changing a boundary or changing a property line that then was recorded in the, in the records on a, on a, you know, a Mylar. And that did not, that was not the process here because there were no changed property boundaries. But I see what you're saying is true, they do own the insides of their units and no one owns, they all, all the land, it's in common ownership. But we, we don't need to get bogged down with this right now, 'cause I want you to keep moving forward, but I just wanted to throw that out there to think about.
All right, well, well, let's, let's make sure we talk about it.
Okay.
I mean, I've always looked at PUD as a subset, subdivision. It, it's not one or the other, they, you, you can do a subdivision without a PUD, but with a PUD, you really are still applying your subdivision standards and, and concepts.
Okay. So let's see. I think that's, that was all I wanted to say about that. So I am ready to move to the subdivision sections, which is basically Article 9. So I am moving all the way up to page 80. So see, you can see here, accessory dwelling unit, I'll just show you. As an example, I highlighted this section. You've basically chosen to make any new accessory dwelling unit, or revision of accessory dwelling unit requires a conditional use permit if it results in a new accessory structure, increase in height or floor area, et cetera. That may be too, you may wanna relook at that. And Chris, I can't remember whether this proposed change came from our conversations or whether it's just one I just flagged, but you'll see in Sections 4, and 5 and 6, there are some yellow highlights where I'm, I'm looking for you to think about those provisions and, and see if what you see there makes sense to you. So maybe we'll get back to it later tonight, maybe we won't, but if we don't, that's kind of your homework is to go through and look at the yellow highlighting. That's not merely a site reference, and, and think about whether it makes sense for the town of Bristol. So I'm gonna just skip all the way down now to page 80. While I'm doing this, is everybody fiddling along? Okay, anything I can do better?
Well.
Okay. So subdivision regulations, and this, we talked a little bit about the, the purpose beforehand. Chris talked about giving basically more local control to the town of Bristol because by having subdivision regulations, you increase the, the threshold of what constitutes development in, in Act 250. It goes from one-acre commercial development up to 10-acre commercial development. It goes from six lots up to 10 lots. Changes like that. So, what subdivision looks at, and Katie mentioned this earlier, was the subdivision of land is proposed to be made, so before you can sell anything, you need a permit, basically to subdivide the property, split the property. That's Section 902. 903 gives you a general overview of the, of the process. I broke it into boundary line adjustments, and then minor subdivisions and major subdivisions. And we'll get to the difference between tho, those in a second. 910 is your application process. It's basically, it encourages you go to, go and talk with the zoning administrator before you, you wanna subdivide, and he will basically lead you to the development review board and through the, the application process. Starting with a simple boundary line adjustment, I wanted to try and keep this as simple as possible, so I, I'm talking with Chris, this is an administrative permit. Someone, if I want to swap a boundary with my neighbor and add 500 feet to my property and take 500 feet from his property, assuming I don't violate any of your, your setback regulations, we can do that with basically a simple permit from the zoning administrator. So try to keep it relatively process-free. I say simple boundary line adjustments. Again, if, if the boundary line adjustment is not so simple, it, it causes me to violate a setback so that my house is now too close to the line, or the, the lot I'm creating is too small for the, the zone in which I'm in, or some other complication, then Chris has the ability to kick it up to the development review board to look at. But we're gonna, but the simple ones, we're gonna let him do and, and get done quickly, easily. They still will need to record a plat depicting the boundary line adjustment. So they'll, they'll have to get the boundary line surveyed and, and then Chris will say, yes, this is what I permitted, pass it up to the, the DRB for their, their signature, enter a plat and put it in the land records so that it's, it's there forever. Any questions about boundary line adjustments?
No.
Okay. If you are subdividing properties, splitting a property into two, basically two or more pieces then, so creating a new parcel, everything starts with sketch plan review. The way I've set up sketch plan review, Section 920, is that the sketch plan review is an informal conversation between the applicant and the, the DRB. So I don't have a lot of hearing requirements, notice requirements, et cetera. They need to get an application before the, before the DRB, but it is their ability to say, this is kind of what I'm thinking of doing, does it meet your needs? So I am following statute. Hearings will be required later on when it becomes a more formal process. But I've set up this sketch plan, or sketch plan review here to be a more informal process. The DRB will not be making any substantive decisions in sketch plan. But, and, and actually, in the applications, you can see there, the standards are a lot less formal. I'm not asking for permits, I'm asking for basically something that you can show informally the, the development review board what you want to do. So the principal, principal purposes of the sketch plan are gonna be basically four things. It's an informal discussion, we talked about that. The DRB will make what I would call procedural decisions. So it will classify an applicant's project as either a major or a minor subdivision. The definition of major and minor subdivisions are contained in Section 1000 of these regs, or Article 10, the definitions. I would tell you that a minor subdivision is basically three lots or less, a major subdivision is four or more. And, or it involves a commercial subdivision, or it involves the building of a new road. And the reason I tied it to three lots versus four is kind of our, is kind of our boundary line is because a driveway can serve three lots. It's gotta be a private road, private-public road to serve four or more. So that's what, it shows that as a, as a delineation between the two. Kevin, I know you had a question as to whether or not that might be too small, and whether the, the threshold for a, a major might be greater. Let's see. The other things that they'll do at sketch plan is determine whether the applicant intends to use the PUD program. So are they asking for any waivers of anything in the zone? And then, basically, and this is probably the most important one, tell the applicant what they're going to require in the application process. So if they deem it a major, they're probably gonna require that the applicant fulfill all of the application requirements. It ha, so for example, if I own a farm and I'm selling 20 acres of, of field, I'm selling one field to my next-door neighbor who also owns a farm, so I'm only selling one lot and dividing off 20 acres and selling it. That might be a minor application, and if, if it's intended to be kept as a field, and it, it doesn't make any sense for the DRB to ask for wastewater permits, or water permits, or stormwater permits, or a number of those things because it's intended to be kept as a, as a farm field. If on the other hand, and you can see it ramping up, if I'm starting to build houses, then I am gonna need wastewater permits, water permits, things of that nature. So that's one, that's probably the most important decision the DRB is gonna make after plat plan is we think you're a minor or a major and we're willing to waive, if, if you're a minor, we're willing to waive X application criteria. And I tell you the reason you waive them is because they're not applicable to the, the application.
I know that in some communities, there's no application fee for the sketch plan. I don't know if that's across the board, but, so it's basically like an informal conversation. You have a certain amount, you know, you have some required drawings and information to, to come up with, you know, how you wanna move forward, but it, it's kind of a litmus test. Like, is it gonna work, is it not gonna work?
Yeah, I think that's fair, Katie. And you, Bristol, will get to decide whether or not you wanna charge a fee for that.
Yes. So in Monkey, what they do for sketch is, it's not a warrant hearing, it's just part of the, they're added to the agenda for the DRB. And it's just part of the hearing, I mean, part of the standard meeting. So there is no fee. Once you get into preliminary and final, those are considered hearings, and then there's fees applied at that point.
Everybody okay with sketch plans so far? Over going? Okay, I'm gonna move on to preliminary plat. Preliminary would be for a major, a final plat would be for a minor. So depending upon the decision that the DRB made at sketch plan, is it, is it a major or is it a minor? They either move to preliminary for a major or final for a minor. The differences between a major and minor are, a major will require a preliminary plat hearing and a final plat hearing. So basically two hearings, a minor only requires one. And the development review board has the ability, so minor subdivisions require one hearing, and the development review board, because minor subdivisions are presumed to be smaller in size and impact, the review criteria for minor subdivisions may be more limited, and the development review board may waive some of the applicable criteria, which is what we just talked about. Section 932, application. I would like you to pay attention to this section, application, and basically the section that's decision, and I think it's 937, I'm just gonna go down and take a quick look. 937, so I want you to compare carefully nine, not, not necessarily tonight, but 932 and 937. They should match up. So all of the things that we require in the application should be there because the development review board is going to make a decision on them in the, in the decision-making process. Okay, so application has basically two different sections, it's written material that we need. So just ownership and administration. You've got, you've got permission to subdivide the property, you own it. Or you are, you have a, basically a, a letter of agency from the, from the owner. Zoning districts, so the first thing we look at is, what zoning district are you in? What lots are there? What's the existing condition? Describe it for me. So that we know basically the, the rules of the game for your zoning. Three, PUDs. So if you want some of those zoning conditions waived, this is the place where you tell us, hey, instead of having a, a two-acre lot minimum, I'd like to create a couple half-acre lots and then preserve some common land. This tells us, this tells the DRB that they have to apply the PUD conditions as well as the, the other criteria for, um, the other decision criteria for subdivision. And it, it tells them specifically what the applicant is waiving, how it's varying from your existing zoning regulations. Number four, water supply wastewater disposal. We've tied this directly to, to basically state permits. Bristol has its own water supply. But generally, the, the engineers will create a permit for the state for water supply wastewater disposal. What we're saying is, give us that permit application. The town of Bristol, basically, if you get a state permit, will basically believe that you have got it right and you'll satisfy that criteria. Similarly, with stormwater, we tie it to state permits. If the subdivision is of a size that it needs a state permit, if it's not of a size that it needs a state permit, we say, we ask the applicant to tell us what they have done to mitigate stormwater. So gutters, rain barrels, rain gardens, berms, ditches, whatever they've engineered into the project to take care of stormwater. Transportation infrastructure. Basically, what we're asking for is a permit from your select board. So your select board controls the highways. They have a, basically, an access plan for driveways, and they have road standards for roads. We're asking that the applicant show us that they've satisfied the select board for your, either the driveway access or a road, if it's a big enough subdivision for a road. Utilities, we're asking for a description of all utilities. Common land and governance, where will it be? Natural resources. So we chose these natural resources, they're, they're largely water-related. All of the resources are pretty well mapped on the Agency of Natural Resources Atlas. So for Bristol's first subdivision regulations, we thought, okay, if someone can go, go to the Nat, Agency of Natural Resources Atlas, or, are all of you familiar with that? I see a couple people nodding their head. You, I would ask that all of you go to the Agency of Natural Resources, Natural Resource Atlas, and look around, and specifically look for shorelines or floodplains or wetlands. Shorelines are only gonna apply around Bristol Pond. Floodplains are throughout. Get familiar with, with those layers. They're pretty definitive and they're pretty easy to see whether or not you have a, a stream. And actually, the streams reference Section 513 in your zoning regulations, which require a 50-foot setback. So-
I, I can send out a, a link tomorrow to the, uh, to the planning commission uh, to where to find this atlas online.
Great, thank you.
So didn't we look at that? We looked at all that when we were doing the, um,
Energy.
The natural resource section, right?
Yes, we did.
Yeah.
So it shows that because it's a good publicly available resource. And again, these, um, these layers are, are easy to find on there and they're, they're pretty well defined. So, um, we thought it was a good way to, to protect the, the resources, but not put a, a lot of burden on the landowner to, uh, to come up and do a site specific study, which, which might cost them a lot of money. Now, they might have to do that if they're going through act two fifty, but we chose, at least in this draft, as it's proposed, not to make them do that if they're going, uh, for the town of Bristol.
Just as a matter of clarification, under what circumstances would a developer have to go through act two fifty?
So if they are proposing a commercial development on greater than 10 acres of land, they would need to go through act two fifty. If they're proposing a subdivision with more than 10 units of housing, they would need to go through act two fifty. Um, there are a bunch of other definitions of development for act two fifty that, you know, if, if you're above 2,500 feet, you have to go through act two fifty regardless of what are you doing. There's, there are a lot of them, but those two are probably the, the main thresholds that most people deal with. So commercial development greater than 10 acres and residential development greater than 10 units.
Thank you.
Um, and again, that's if a town has subdivision regulations. If a town doesn't have subdivision regulations, then it's commercial development greater than one acre or residential development greater than, or greater than five units, six, six units or more. So in addition to the written description above, um, that we just went through, we're also asking for a plat plan. The plat plan is, is going to be technically your boundaries. So it's I'm subdividing lots A, B, and C. And then we're also asking for a site plan in support of that. The site plan is everything else. So think of the plat plan as your, your survey plat, your survey, and the site plan as a lot of the detail that you would put on top of that. So, um, it, it could be the location of a wastewater system or a water system or a stormwater system, or I'm preserving this tree or there's a wetland over there and I'm staying over there. The site plan kind of adds the, the details. The plat plan is the legal document that shows where the lots that are being subdivided are. Okay? Um, these criteria basically match the criteria above. So tell me what you're doing and then show me how it fits on the plans. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. And again, you can say, you can see the reference to the Agency of Natural Resources Atlas and the specific data layers that, uh, that we're asking them to show on the, uh, on the site plan. And if they're not there, it means the resource isn't there and they don't have to worry about it. Um, number C concurrent application material. If I have a, if I am proposing a subdivision and I am also proposing to build a commercial facility on one lot of that subdivision and I want to do them concurrently, then have the ability, the DRB has the ability to, uh, to do them concurrently. But I've got some more application criteria to, uh, to satisfy for, um, my building, my commercial building or my commercial enterprise. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, you can see here time, notice, review procedures. I go back to where we started in section three forty. It's the same as all the others, all the other types of, uh, hearing reviews that the DRB are, are doing. But I include, since this, since this has so much application difference, I included it here, um, as well. Um, requirements for approval of a ma- major minor subdivisions. Um, the review criteria, so you've got to show us that you own it and that you have the ability to subdivide it. You've got to show us that you've met your zoning or, um, with P U Ds that you've, uh, that we've given you the waivers that you requested for. You've got to show us that you've gotten state water and wastewater permits. Um, for preliminary plat, just show us that you put in an application. For final plat, show us that you got your permit. It's kind of a, a follow the money trend or, uh, progression, um, that allows developers hopefully to be as efficient as they can between the state and the town process. And, um, since it's all at risk money, basically pay as they satisfy different criteria. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yes.
Okay. So stormwater ingrading, again, linked to, linked to the state. Um, but then again, if, if you're smaller, if you're a minor subdivision and you're smaller than the state storm, like, show us what you did to reasonably mitigate stormwater from this property. And properties all different. It's hard to know what that might be, even if they're under the state, state threshold. But they have the ability to show you that they've done it and you can, um, make that determination. Uh, transportation infrastructure, we talked about town roads. Um, we, we talked about basically the select board having a permit. Um, the, in number C, I have highlighted, letter, excuse me, letter C, I have highlighted. Um, all new roads, whether public or private, shall comply with the Vermont Agency of Transportation Vermont State Design Standards. Um, nineteen ninety-seven, I highlighted it because that's a different standard than your select board currently uses. I would tell you it's a way better standard than what your select board uses. And I, and I want to go to the select board to their, uh, their road permit and, and ask them to make this change. Right now they use two standards. One is called, uh, I believe it's A seventy-six are the roadway standards. Um, and it, the regardless of the traffic that is going to be on that road, they require, um, ten foot lanes and four foot shoulders and pave it paved and curbed. And, um, honestly, in, for some small private roads, they require them to be overbuilt. Um, the state standards are actually much more, um, geared to smaller towns, believe it or not, and do a much better job of saying, well, if you have, you know, projected, uh, traffic on your roadway of less than a hundred vehicles, you can have eight foot lanes. If you, and, and no shoulders. If you have projected traffic of less than 500 vehicles, you can have 10 foot lanes. It, it does a much better job of scaling the infrastructure to the demands that are going to be on it. So I'm making this recommendation, the, um, I think I, I put a link to the standards right in the document so that you can use it. And I'd go to rural roads. So right here, this is where you can find that document. Um, on the agency or transportation's website, you can compare it to the standard, the A seventy-six standards um, that your select board currently uses and make your own decision. Okay. Um, let's see. G, I hi- well, I highlighted D, all new roads must meet the approval of the select board. Um, that gets it back to the road permit. It does change your zoning a little bit. And you can see in one of the sections of your zoning, um, you have some road standards. Um, I think it's section seven hundred or so. I basically took those out and said, use the same standards that your select board applies in your zoning so that, that you aren't fighting at cross purposes.
Yeah, it was section seven twenty.
Okay, thank you. Um, let's see, G, I highlighted in certain places within your village. So within your village business district, so in certain zoning districts within your village, those village business district, the residential office commercial, which is right along West Street, the village mix district, which is, uh, Stony Hill and, um, of, uh, Bristol Works largely, and the high density residential district, which is what you think of your village proper. Basically, if someone is doing a subdivision in there, um, ask them to, uh, let's see, what do I say? Subdivision of the village districts shall contain sidewalks. So I'm pointing that out to you. That's your decision to make. Would you like to stop and discuss it or would you like to keep going?
Keep going.
Okay, hearing, hearing.
Let's keep going, let's keep going.
Okay.
But thank you for pointing it out.
Um, utility easements, I have 20 feet for utility easements. Um, I, your regulations currently have, uh, two different requirements for right of way. One is 50 feet for a conditional use and one is 35 feet for a permitted use. I kept those in here as those, as, as that. That can be your decision again. Kevin, you had a question here about, um, this basically says, um, as one of your decision criteria, distribution systems should be built, should be built underground, except when affordability, technology and or distance or terrain makes it economically unfeasible, the applicant shall bear the burden of demonstrating economic hardship. So, um, you had, you wanted to discuss that. I said, you said it was an attractive feature, but has, uh, has limited use in town, I think.
That's, yeah, I, I think it merits it. I don't know if we need to do it tonight, but, um, I mean, that's a, that's a standard clause, put everything in the ground. But, um, once you start going distances and stuff like that, it may or may not make it worthwhile. And this, this type of language can, uh, where the applicant needs to bear the burden of demonstrating economic hardship can just turn things in a circle. So I, seems, and maybe, maybe I don't know when it feels that way, but it seems like we should encourage it, but not require it in, in a sense that, um, it, it becomes a, becomes inferred as a requirement.
Okay, so let's, let's leave that for you all to discuss another time. I, I agree with you. I think it merits discussion. I tried to the line with, with should be underground. But, um, if the applicant says, you know, come on, I'm going over a mile and it's going to add however much to the cost of the housing that I'm trying to build and I'm trying to do affordable housing, maybe it is something you can reconsider. But I, I did put the burden on the applicant for that. So, um, food for discussion further. Comment.
Adam, it's, you know.
All right, Bill.
Leave that one, I'd like to flag it also. Would that include electric power lines?
Yes.
Uh, that's definitely, uh, a problem because that's very expensive to put power lines underground. And sometimes makes good sense. It's a marketing feature for the developer. Uh, but if there's any distance at all, it can multiply by three or five or even 10 times the cost. And if you had some, a, an interest group or an opponent who wanted to argue that was not a hardship, it could become a protracted and expensive and contentious debate. So I, I think we should allow the, we should not give the impression that it would be the norm to put power underground.
Okay, um, thank you, Bill. Um, I get it. Let's, I'm going to let you all have that discussion another night, but I will absolutely leave it flagged for you.
Okay, good.
Let's see, the next thing I have highlighted in yellow here, um, are building envelopes. And, uh, surrounding the disturbed area of construction and limiting cutting trees outside such envelope. I tried to, I think I only used one big, um, building envelope. And then there was also some language here about topsoil, sand and gravel. Um, can't be used other than to meet construction needs of the, uh, of the development or, yeah, of the development. Um, I highlighted this, I don't know, I highlighted this for you because you may want them or not. If you want building envelopes, don't make them too constrictive. You go into the ground in Vermont and you can find ledge and you can find a lot of other stuff. And, um, you're not, you're not regulating this to the foot. Um, it's, it's construction just doesn't work that way up here. Um, the other things about sand and gravel or, uh, or birmingham landscaping, again, I'll, I'll, I'll leave to you. But I did highlight it and I did, uh, I guess I'd say, uh, discriminate between the village and the, uh, and, and outer areas as far as, as landscaping or what trees or street trees might be appropriated or things of that nature. Um, because they're, they're different. Uh, the character of each area is different and, and we need to recognize that as we, uh, apply the regulations. Or I would encourage you to recognize that as, as you apply those regulations. Let's see, just kind of the final plat review. Everything's the same as the preliminary, um, except you've got to basically go back and show um, the things that you didn't prove at preliminary. Um, so for example, if you, if you put in a permit application and, um, at preliminary, you've got to come back with the final, uh, the final approved permit. Um, at final plat, um, the recording, recording requirements are here for, um, basically to record the plat in the land records. Um, you need more detail at final plat. Um, the hearing process is the same. Um, I put a little more, at final, I put a little bit more detail into the decisions that you're making. Um, especially if it's a bigger subdivision and the town is taking infrastructure, allowing connections to infrastructure. You want to make sure that you're, I, I guess I've set it up so that there are mechanisms that if the town chooses to, it can require, require bonds or it can require inspection of a road if they're taking it or of a water system if they're taking it, uh, things of that nature. So that's, um, required improvements, bonding requirements, public acceptance of streets, filing of an approved plat, it's got to be done within 180 days. That's relatively, um, I mean, that's actually required in statute. Appeals is, is boilerplate. And that gets us through your subdivision regulations. There was only one definition that I wanted to talk about, and that was the definition between major and minor subdivision. I talked about it a little bit earlier. Um, in your definition sections, I added some definitions where I added them. I basically put F H in front of them. So it's a definition that came from your, I moved it from your flood hazard area to definitions in total. So all your definitions are in the same place. But I labeled it as flood hazard. If I put a, an S in front of it, it's a definition. So subdivision, S subdivision boundary line adjustment. Um, so you can see the, the definitions that I added. The only one I wanted to highlight for you was. The only one I wanted to highlight for you was the definition of a major and minor subdivision. And I talked a little bit about it beforehand. Where's the, so it's going to be subdivision major, sorry. Sketch plan, site plan. Come on. There we go.
Yeah.
Yep. So again, generally, a major subdivision is a subdivision containing four or more lots, which is three new lots plus the existing lot and requiring a new road extension of municipal services or commercial, commercial and recreational uses or multifamily housing projects. Otherwise, it's a minor. Kevin, again, you had some questions about what that threshold. I really tied the threshold to the, the roads and the utility improvements required. And that's why I chose that. You all, as a planning commission, could choose a different threshold if you wanted to.
Yeah, I think it merits discussion. The thing that comes to mind is particularly looking up this, I live on North Street. So I look up the street and what Robert Fuller is doing. It's a six lot subdivision. With this setup, he would have to, he would be considered a major. And I, I don't, I don't know if what he's trying to do up there merits the extra time and money to go through a major versus a minor. That's why I'm thinking four might be kind of restrictive. And that, and we, I wasn't involved, but the, the Perrington one that we finalized some plats on recently was the same thing. I think that was a five or six lot subdivision. Just, it, it just seems like that number may be more reasonable. And I'm, I'm, so I, I'd like to see it discussed more at another time.
Okay. So how are you all feeling? I, I've basically gotten through the subdivision section and the process section. Would you, would you like to stop now? And then I can, I can join you via Zoom at your next meeting and we can have some of these discussions about the things highlighted in yellow.
I agree with that. I think we need more discussion, discussion on several of those items and more time that we have tonight.
But I'm good, I don't, I'm just speaking for myself, but I'm, it's 8:30, so I'm good for another half an hour if, if everybody else is.
Good either way.
Overwhelming cheers.
I think we need more time than that.
Well, I, I, I would actually, you know, it's interesting you brought up the Robert Fuller project. That was a PUD, it was a different, a different approach than I, I'm, that I think about as subdivision. So I would like to think about that a little bit more and maybe have that discussion further. In terms of tonight, I guess we could, I don't know how many nays and how many yays we have to wrap it up. But I think this is a lot of information for people to digest. And I think, I think this has been really great. You know, it's sort of was like a crash course in this for, I'm sure, some people. But, so anyone else want to chime in on that? I mean, I'm okay with continuing another time and.
Chris, can you?
I'm sorry, Katie, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Chris, can you print this out and we could come by your office and pick up a copy? Is that possible, just for section nine?
I thought everyone had it.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, but there's been a lot of corrections here. Adams added a lot of stuff here.
Yeah, what I'll do is, once I have a finalized, an updated version between Adam and myself, I'll print out copies and I'll send out an email that they're available.
That'd be great.
Good, thanks.
I think we've raced through a lot of stuff tonight and it would be useful to have time to digest it before going into a detailed discussion.
Okay, thanks. Anyone else?
I'm always for an early meeting.
You already look pretty comfy, Bill.
I am, I am, but I like to get even more comfy. Kevin, can you, can you hold out till next time with your further thoughts?
Certainly.
Okay.
I, I was, I was just, no, I'm, I'm fine either way.
Okay.
I think this format's worked out pretty well. So I think we can begin with a little further explanation on the specific items.
Thank you, Adam, that was very, very well done. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. And take a look at the, the sections that are in yellow. You're welcome to bring up any questions that you want, but those are the ones that I highlighted for you that I thought, or either you flagged, Kevin flagged as meriting more discussion or Chris or Katie flagged as meriting more discussion or I did. So I will, I will get the, the couple of consensus items that we did tonight out to Chris tomorrow so that he can print those to you. And Katie will let me know when I'm going to meet with you next time. And I will see you then. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Adam.
Thanks, Adam.
Thanks, everybody.
Take care.
Okay. So I guess we need a motion to, a motion to adjourn.
I'll move that motion.
Okay.
Second.
Excellent. We're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.